Good evening and welcome to the Sleda Independent Schools District's Video Conference and Meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizens' input electronic sign up shows the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at?
No worries.
6:01 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Sotero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruzwood Choa. Trustee Lucero and Trustee Rosales are not able to attend this meeting and are excused. Trustee Bustillos, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence?
My camera is not working this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible, I'm sorry, let me start all over. I was saying it, I didn't mute my, I unmuted myself, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag, Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Now, can I have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustillos.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. Ms. Matthews, do we have any citizens' input tonight?
Yes, we do. We have Rebecca Salas in regards to opening of schools. Ms. Salas, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you about regarding my major concern. One, I am a retired teacher. I have four kids that attended YISD a while back. Now I have grandchildren that attend the school and also two daughters that teach. My major concern, of course, is with the consideration of opening our school this coming next month. Now, my experience working with students and staff tells me that it is pretty much impossible to follow all the protocols that will be put in place. Teachers know very well that students K through 12, their natural behavior doesn't recognize social distancing, and it's also an impossibility to monitor students 100% of the time. As for teachers, they are expected to monitor students, monitor social distancing, instruction, and so on and so on, and also cleanliness or disinfecting, et cetera, et cetera, let alone the responsibility of making every effort that no student gets infected. That's really asking a lot of our teachers. Imagine you having one of your students infecting someone else in your classroom. The guilt that that would accompany that would be life lasting, especially if it would take a life. I ask that you do everything you can to continue instruction online. It's working right now, so I don't understand why it needs to be changed. I, I think that that yellow code, I also believe is too risky. I know that you have to abide by state, city guidelines and so forth, but I'm asking that you do everything you can in your power to eliminate, I don't know, maybe continue with the way things are right now. I guess that's really pretty much all. I would like to attend your next meeting, but I'm a 70 plus, I'll just say plus, 70 plus retired teacher from your district, and I just implore that you do as much as you can to eliminate this, this horrible thing that's going on and keep safe, keep our kids safe as much as possible. Again, thank you for your time and listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. We will get back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now proceed to the agenda review. During the September 14th, Board Workshop Trustee Woodruff pulled consent item number 11 for a separate vote. The agenda is considered the consensus of the board. Dr. Delatorre, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just President Ochoa, members of the board, just really briefly, we have had the opportunity to go out and visit all of the learning hubs that opened and were made available for our most vulnerable students throughout the district at school sites. And I'm pleased to report that, under the circumstances with all of the challenges that we have, those learning hubs appear to be going as planned. Children are attending. The numbers vary. All of the principals from that particular learning community are convening at the hub and taking responsibility for their own students because they know their students best and students are doing the best they can. Teachers, I'm so impressed with how creative and innovative they've become and how comfortable they've become in using technology as a platform to deliver instruction. I can't sit here and tell you that it is the equivalent of the experience that they would be receiving or experiencing if those teachers were in the class, but under the circumstances, they're doing a phenomenal job. Their spirit and their attitude seems to be very optimistic. Energy, although I can tell they're tired, they're trying to maintain the energy that they need to engage their students. And so we will continue to visit these learning hubs and monitor our children and the progress that they're making, but the plan is going as expected. And I want to give Dr. Chacon, her team, Gloria Chavez, all of the people that worked so hard over the summer and fall to make this a reality and at least after the first week to make it a success. The second thing that I want to report to you is that after the first initial COVID case with a volleyball player, the entire first week of weight training, conditioning, and practice seems to have gone very well. We've not had any additional cases. And the kids, it's great to get out there and be in and among the kids. They're excited to be participating again in athletics. And the volleyball season actually starts tomorrow night. You should have received a B.C. earlier today relative to what that, that will look like. We are based on the data in a tier-two environment. That means that in addition to the players, managers, and trainers that would typically be part of a tier-one experience, we have decided to allow each parent two tickets to attend their child's sporting event. In volleyball, it is far, far less of a risk because typically a volleyball team may have anywhere from 12 to at most 15 athletes. If each of those athletes invite two parents or two family members, we're looking at 30 individuals attending the volleyball game. And we believe that, given the size of our gyms and the capacity of our gyms, that we can guarantee the social distance. We can, I think, very quickly take all of their temperatures. The school administration and the athletic administrators at each of the seven comprehensive high schools have created or in the process of creating seating charts. So for the purpose of contact tracing, we'll know who was sitting where and with who. They'll receive the tickets in advance, so they will not have to stand in line to buy tickets, and they'll get an opportunity to support their children. The, the other parents that are under consideration are the parents of those cheerleaders who you asked to perform at the volleyball game. The band will not be performing at volleyball games, there are just too many of them, and the dance teams, at least at present, are not scheduled to attend or perform. So even if we were to allow the cheerleaders, they typically send an abbreviated number of girls, usually between six and eight. That just adds another 15 parents or about seven slots if they sit together. And again, I think our gyms can accommodate that. The, the one that's going to take a little more time that they're all working on right now is, are the football games. And at present, the football games are scheduled to, in addition, in addition to having the players, the student athletes, the managers, the trainers, the cheerleaders, there is a likelihood that we can accommodate the dance team, the trouperettes, rangerettes, and the band. But all of the administrative teams at each of the high schools have gone back, and they're going to create a seating chart in their stadium. What you may hear is some criticism from a lot of people that would like to attend the games, but we believe that for the first game, we need to be very, very careful. We don't want our first game to be our last game. And so we're going to limit that to parents once again. We've done a survey of how many football players they have at each of the respective levels. Again, each of those players will get two tickets, and we will find a way to socially distance all of the parents. Should we have any extra tickets? The priority goes to those student athletes who come from, I call it an extended family, but basically it's a family that the mother and father are no longer together and they've since married, and any extra tickets would go to try and get both the mother's family and the father's family there to support their student athlete. We will continue to monitor the numbers, and if the numbers should go up before October 2nd, then we may have to retreat from something like this. But it appears that the numbers are either holding stable at the moment, in some cases they seem to be going down very slightly. The other criticism we may get is that we've decided that the visiting team cannot bring a band and spectators because ultimately we would have to be responsible, not just for implementing all of the safety elements, but if someone were to get sick, the county would hold us responsible for doing the contact tracing, and we don't know those families or it would become very difficult for our team to try and track down a student athlete or a parent or spectator from an opposing team, some from a neighboring school district, and adequately identify all of the people that they may have been in contact with. So at present, it's just the home team, the participants, I call it the support staff, that's the band, the cheerleaders, and those organizations, and two family members for each student athlete. Once you get it and you review it, if you have any questions, please feel free to call me over the weekend. Early next week, I should be able to share with you details on what a football game will look like. The first week, October 9th, we've got four games or four schools in our district competing. I believe Riverside is playing Jefferson at Riverside. Bel Air is not playing at home. Del Valle is playing Eastlake. And then we've got Hanks and Eastwood playing against one another. That's going to be a bit of a different conversation because we need to consider whether or not inviting the Hanks parents to the game is the right thing to do, or whether or not we just need to adhere to our decision whether or not they are an in-district team or an out-of-district team. And then the other one that we're having to work very hard to make happen is Parkland High School. They will be hosting Eastlake, I believe, and they have, compared to the other stadiums in the district, they have a smaller stadium. So they're going to have to go back and really take a look at it. We have offered to help Parkland by potentially bringing in additional portable bleachers and setting them up at the end of the football field to try and make sure that they get the same opportunity as all of the other high schools in the district. But this is probably a conversation that we can take offline and you can call me or Mr. Williams, Martin Segovia is very involved in this. In fact, he's working on a computer program application that would allow parents to buy their tickets electronically, and those tickets would already come with where they're sitting, and we would accompany that with a map of the stadium so they know that the minute they get out of their vehicle, they're not to congregate, there's no tailgating, you walk to the designated entrance, you get your temperature taken, we make sure that you have a mask, and you move directly to your, your seats. There is no concession stand, and the restrooms will be monitored and limited to a set number of individuals that can use the restroom at any given time. And then in cases where there are multiple games at a stadium, we may need to expand the time between the games to go in and sanitize and fog all of the seats where the previous spectators were seating. In aggregate, it looks like we're working with about a 25% to 30% of stadium capacity by doing this, so it's relatively low. There are some schools in East Texas especially where it would be hard for you to make a distinction between the 2020 football season and the 2019 football season. They look a lot alike, but TEA has sent those districts and those schools a letter indicating that if, if they learn of or have video indicating that there are no masks, there doesn't seem to be the social distance, nobody is supervising and enforcing social distance, that they could intervene and suspend that school from the following week's game, and if it continued, have that school forfeit all of their games. So there, there's a lot, and I think when I met with the principals today and the athletic directors and the coaches, I, I made sure that they understood, if you take it lightly and we don't do it exactly as planned, again, October 2nd may be your first and your last game, so please, if you want to have a full season, if you want to play football games, we all really need to, to adhere to these strict guidelines. And they've been doing a great job, like I said, in their practices. We've, we've still just had that one incident, I believe, at Eastwood, the Eastwood volleyball team, and she came into contact with someone outside of practice who learned, or we learned later on, tested positive for COVID-19 and was not part of the practice. And then finally, I want to thank State Farm, and Rosales, State Farm has donated, generous donation of $500 to support the school, to support Texas, and in any way that they think it is appropriate to use those funds and those resources. Mike was instrumental in making us aware of the opportunity. We applied and we received the $500 to help the school. And that concludes the report.
Dr. Delatorre? Order agenda has been approved. May I have a motion on the remaining consent agenda items?
Mr. Ochoa, this is Connie Woodruff.
We have a motion by Ms. Woodruff. Please read your motion.
I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bustillo, seconds. Trustee Bustillo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Five in favor. We'll next go to full consent agenda item. Number 11, private grant application to Outschool, Inc. for student support. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Ochoa, I'd just like to, yes, I'd just like to say thank you again to the people who wrote this grant and to all the hard work that, that our staff is doing to find opportunities for our children that will help them through this difficult time. So I just like, want to say thank you for all that, and also to the people who are doing the grant because that just helps us out.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. I think we all reaffirm what you just said as part of the board. We want to thank you both. Motion.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Ms. Woodruff?
I move to ratify the approval of the grant application to Outschool, Inc. for funding up to $250,000 for student support.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bustillo, seconds. Trustee Bustillo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote? We can't hear you, Shane.
Yes. Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa?
Yes.
Vote yes. Yeah, I heard that, thank you. Result in five in favor. All right, action items. The order setting the tax rate 2020-21, is there any discussion? No discussion, may I have a motion?
Choa.
Mr. Bustillos?
I move to approve that the tax, the property tax rate be increased by adoption of the tax rate as set forth in the attached order and in including separate components for maintenance and operations of 1.0541 and debt services of 0.3925 for the total of $1.4466 per $100 evaluation, which is effective, effectively an 8.69% increase in tax rate.
May I have a second?
Mr. Ochoa, I will second it, but I think Mr. Hagerty had something to say.
I understand.
Oh, they're in a discussion? Okay. I didn't see. Have we all? Does he have something to say?
I thought he did.
Can you, can you hear me? I didn't hear. Yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick moment and thank this board for the support I received in obtaining more information on this very important subject, allowing me time to review the 200-plus pages of data, hosting a workshop, allowing time for all avenues of funding to be explored and questions to be answered. As can be confirmed by the Texas Association of School Boards, the seven of us have five duties as board members. Set district goals, adopt policy, hire and evaluate the superintendent, communicate with the community, and we set the tax rate and adopt the budget. I'm proud to know that all of you take your role as board members seriously, as I do, and I want to remind you that not a single one of these duties is ceremonial, nor should they ever be inferred to be. Each of you is elected to perform these duties, act as a voice for the community, and as a form of checks and balances for this multi-hundred-million-dollar organization. I appreciate the job you perform, your ability to hear contrasting viewpoints, discuss all options presented, and make decisions that are in the best interest of your respective community and for all 40,000 of our students. I am proud to serve on this board that is willing to do its homework, get into the weeds, and ensure that the decisions that we make are informed and thought out. In the future, I would like to request that we receive information in a timely manner that allows for the same type of scrutiny to be applied for decisions this board must make. And again, I thank each of you for your service, dedication, and willingness to be thorough and resolute in the decisions we are asked to make. President Ochoa, thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Since we've already had a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Woodruff, seconds. Trustee Bustillo, how do you vote? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, five in favor, none opposed. Action item number two, Task B, Delegate and Alternate Designation. Is there any discussion? If not, I, Trustee Ochoa, make the motion to approve Trustee Bustillos as a delegate and Trustee Lucero as the alternate delegate to serve as a board's voice in the Task B delegate, delegate assembly. May I have a second?
Second.
I, Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, five in favor and none opposed, and I want to thank you both for, for stepping up and taking this role. I think it's very important for our board to keep us informed as to what's happening at, at that level.
Thank you.
Number three, Award of Face One, number one, Solicitation, number bond, 2019 RFP-02BP1905 Hanks Middle School. Is there any discussion? Okay. I'm going to make the motion for this. Thank you for allowing me this. Recommended by the administration, I move to approve Amendment One to Contract, number 20200105, Solicitation, number bond 2019 RP-02BP1905. Solicitation Number Bond 2019 RP dash 02 BP 1905 Hanks Middle School with Buford Thompson Company LLC for Phase One for a not exceeding the amount of $2 million from bond funds towards the guaranteed maximum price GMP with the remaining packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price GMP and estimated cost of construction presented at the subsequent board meetings contingent upon final negotiation of contract documents and legal counsel review. May I have a second? Mr. Hagerty, I think you second. Mr. Hagerty, second. Trustee Bustillo's, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, five in favor and none opposed. Okay, thank. We do not have any policy items. The Board of Trustees had determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the for this day. Such closed meetings is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Code Section 551 dot 001, including and not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, Section 551 dash, I mean, dot 076, Declaration Regarding Security Devices for Security Audits. A final decision, action or decision or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session. The final action, decision or vote shall be in the open meeting or a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now close, uh, will go into closed session at. Approval of the District Audit Report Safety and Security Audit. Do we have a motion? Ramirez?
Apologize. I moved to approve the District Audit Report Safety and Security Audit as presented in closed session and submission to the Texas School Safety Center.
May I have a second?
Second.
Woodrow, seconds. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodrow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, five in favor and none opposed. We don't have any further discussion or anything else. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay, adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.